Mayor, Council, item number six is to consider a resolution to remove and store the statue located at Wise Park. And this item was placed on the agenda at the request of Council members Samuel and Fellshaw.
Thank you. Counsel, you have heard the reading of item number six. Is there a motion on this item?
I still move for approval.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor and a second discussion?
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Got kind of a prepared statement here. "I believe that there is value in future generations being able to learn from the mistakes of our past. As Sir Winston Churchill said, those who fail to learn from history are condemned to repeat it. Therefore, I cannot support the current resolution without trying to help negotiate a compromise between those that would like the statue removed and those that would prefer it remained untouched. I propose to change the wording of the resolution to that the city manager is hereby authorized to remove the statue located at Wise Park in the city of Beaumont using professional services to remove and protect the integrity of the statue. Once removed, the statue will be sold to the highest bidder or donated to a museum."
Okay. So, do, if, if this is acceptable by the motion and the second, do we have to re-look at this motion? Or if it's acceptable first, I'll say. So, just how do I proceed?
You have a motion and a second on the floor that has to be dealt with before a substitute or another motion is made.
Okay, so, before I move on, is there any discussion?
Is it, I think, I'm sorry, I think it's possible as an addendum to this motion so that we could vote on it all at once.
That would be how you would deal with your first motion, to accept?
That's what I was asking.
Yeah.
So, I'm asking if you-
I am not amending my motion.
Okay. Are you good with the second, Councilman Pate?
I seconded the motion for discussion.
Okay, discuss. Go ahead. Did you have something?
Well, the point that Councilmember Neal brought up, I think we do want to put this in a historical perspective. And we didn't have anything to do with the women and the daughters of the Confederacy that donated this to the city. I think at this particular point in time, it's not an appropriate monument. And I belong to the Army that won. I take a lot of pride in the fact that, as a retired Army Colonel, I know what we usually did with the guys that lost, as is evidenced by the fact that not what somebody said, but what President Lincoln's whole approach was, was to bring them back like prodigal sons and allow them to become part of the United States of America, which is what happened. I don't think we need to honor those individuals for what they did, as was pointed out. They did, the people that did this don't represent us today without a doubt, by any stretch of the imagination. But I think one of the things that we need to look at and should look at is the approach that the President of the United States, who signed the Emancipation Proclamation, his attitude toward those that took the wrong turn and said, "Look, you made a mistake. You lost. But we're going to bring you back in. But we don't need to make them heroes." Now, a little history, a whole lot of those folks that fought in the, on the side of the losing side, the Confederacy, joined the United States Army later. Matter of fact, several generals served during the Spanish-American War. Four, one of them was even General Lee's nephew and the grandson of General Harry Light Horse Harry, Henry Light Horse Harry Lee. They pledged allegiance back to the United States of America. We need to remember that they were American citizens. They turned their back. And then President Lincoln, President Lincoln said, "We want you back in." That's why he was, that's why that war was fought, to keep the Union together. And he was successful. And like I said, my side won. But what we need to do is appreciate the fact that the people that put these monuments up, these weren't people like David Cargill and that particular piece of artwork there. It wasn't the right thing to do. And I think we shouldn't remove it. But I think we should remove it. And I concur with Councilmember Neal, take it out of Wise Park. It's, and dispose of it appropriately. There may be somebody that wants it. I don't. I don't think the city of Beaumont does. This is not a statue of U.S. Grant. This is not a statue of any of the Presidents. It's simply a statue of a Confederate soldier. And none of us agree with what was written underneath. But we need to move forward, move it away, and move on. And, you know, Jesus said, "Lord, forgive me like I forgive other people." We need to forgive those people that did repent and turn back to the good side and move on. And we needed to take care of this particular monument, move it away. There might be somebody who does want it. We, I don't think we can give it away, Tyrone, because it belongs to the city. And they'd have to pay us something. Since we can't gift anything from the city, we've talked about that over and over again, unless there's some clarification you could give.
The city does have a surplus property policy.
Okay.
Anything of value less than $2,500 can be disposed of on the manager's signature.
Okay. Well, see, thanks for the clarification, because usually, we want to make sure that we're not giving city services for free. That's usually the discussion we have. That's it, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I think Councilmember Getz, let me just clarify where I'm going here. It sounds like that Councilmember Pate is not going to second the motion that's on the floor, based on what he just said, correct?
Yeah, I seconded it for discussion.
Understand. But I'm just, I'm asking that question.
Right.
Okay. So, we don't have Robert's Rules of Order. I'm being told that Robert's Rules of Order allows Councilman Neal to amend the motion, but we do not, we did not adopt Robert's Rules of Order.
You may have not adopted Robert's, no.
We adopted our own. So, before we go to more discussion, I'd like to have a second on that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead, please, Councilman Getz.
Thank you. Two of the speakers that addressed council today admonished us to be on the right side of history. There is no right side of history. There's no wrong side of history. History is just that. It is history. That monument was erected, and I'm going to agree with Mr. Williams on this, was erected as a glorification to the Confederacy. You look at the inscription on the base, there's no way that you cannot conclude that that was the reason that that monument was erected. The language on that base is offensive to me. When it talks about in terms of a cause that was just, I again agree with Mr. Williams, that the cause was the issue of slavery. Anybody that reads the Articles of Succession would have to come to that conclusion. And I understand there's arguments out there about states' rights and the war of Northern aggression and all of that. There's talk about how, well, it wasn't slavery. It was an economic issue. But those are one and the same, because the South built their economy on the backs of slaves. Slavery was wrong. It's evil. It's an abomination. Nobody should be able to support that. I can't imagine anybody would. I don't. Now, having said all that, the spirit of compromise is something that we have lost in this country. And Councilmember Samuel and I sat down three years ago, and I thought we had a compromise worked out, and moved the statue over to Pipkin Park, where the Temple of the Brave is. I don't doubt that the Beaumont boys that went and fought in the Civil War were brave. A lot of them died, but it was not for a just cause. That monument was put up, not just to glorify the Confederacy, but as a memorial to Beaumont boys. They got killed in the Civil War. Do we just discard that, put that aside, not think about that? I have a problem with that aspect of it. And for that reason, I tried to craft something that would be a compromise, in understanding clearly, I am not about glorifying the Confederacy or their cause. You're not going to find any stars and bars at my house. But the language that I put, and I've given everybody a copy of it, and this is a proposal, much like Councilmember Neal has a proposal, that we consider changing the language on the pedestal as follows. "The American Civil War was fought because the leaders of 13 states wanted to maintain the institution of slavery and subjugate their fellow man, specifically black men, women, and children, to the atrocities of human bondage. Between 1861 and 1865, nearly 700,000 American lives were lost in the war between the states, more than the combined total of every other war that the United States of America has ever been involved in. This statue depicts an anonymous Confederate soldier in the typical uniform of that period. It was erected in October 1912 by the Albert Sidney Johnston Camp, Number 75 U.C.V., and the citizens of Beaumont. The statue was erected to glorify the Confederacy and to memorialize citizens from Beaumont that lost their lives in the battle. Through the prism of history, in June 2020, the Beaumont City Council formally recognized that the cause of the Confederacy was not just. But rather than remove the statue from public display, to rededicate it as a solemn reminder of the need for Americans to come together for the common cause of their community and their country, I would put that on one side of the statue. The other side of the statue, where it's now got a cross Texas flag and a Confederate flag, I would put, "United we stand, divided we fall," the seal of the United States of America, and "E Pluribus Unum," which is a motto of the United States, which means "From out of many, one." Now, that's a proposal that I would like to make. I don't think there's going to be four people up here that are going to support that. But I'd like to see if there is, and if there's not, then we can move on to the discussion as to what should happen to that statue. And I will tell you that something's got to be done with that statue. It can't just sit there in its current state, especially with the words on the base. But that is my proposal, Mayor, is to try to modify the language on the statue so that it can serve as an educational purpose. My gosh, you can, you can talk to a lot of kids today. They don't even know where Gettysburg is or what it was. We, we need to be able to educate our children. And people say, "Well, that's what schools, schools are for." Yes, it's great to learn that in schools, but it's not the same from experiencing something. I went to Gettysburg for the first time earlier this year. There's statues there to the Union. There's statues there to the Confederacy. It's hallowed ground. What, over 50,000 people lost their lives in the span of three days? It's the bloodiest battle of the Civil War. Let me tell you what, this stops and makes you think. You can read about Gettysburg in the classroom, but walking those grounds, that's a whole nother thing. History needs to be not just left in the textbooks, but made available for people to understand and see and, and get a feel for what it was really all about.
Thank you. So, can I, Mr. Cooper, our surplus policy in the city of Beaumont does not, does it not allow for sale or donation of surplus property?
It does allow for the sale.
Okay.
But it doesn't require city council action. It just authorizes the city manager to dispose of the property with a value of less than $2,500.
Thank you very much.
One potential pitfall about selling it is, you know, we might sell it for a dollar. But the cost of dismantling that statue and removing that statue, when we talked about moving it to Pipkin Park, Mr. Manager, we had worked up some estimates of costs, I believe. Do you have those available? Then you can let us know what those costs might be, and who was, whose responsibility would it be to pay for those costs?
The estimate for us to do it and utilize a private contractor is roughly, it's just an estimate, is $15,000.
And that would do what exactly?
Take it all down, including that granite base. Take it all down and store it in one of our facilities.
So, it'd be, you know, if, if there's a vote here today to remove it, it would cost us $15,000 potentially, and then it'll be stored in a warehouse until when?
That's not up to me, meaning y'all haven't even voted yet. So, if you vote to remove it, we'll take, we'll start immediately to take it down. We'll store it. And then, I think one of you ought to take the lead and try to find an appropriate place that you can bring back to your fellow council members and get them to approve it.
And at that, and I understand we haven't even voted yet, but part of considering how you vote needs to be able to look ahead to see what the path is for it, okay? So, let's assume there's a vote to take it down. The city dismantles it, spends $15,000 on it to take it down. It's stored in a warehouse. And someone comes and says, "I'll take it." How's it going to be determined what the value is that we sell it for? Are we going to auction, or is, or how's that going to work?
I'm going to bring that back to y'all and let you decide.
But typically, when that happens, if there's something in surplus, y'all don't bring it back to us. It's just because-
No, ma'am, but this is very different.
Right. But I'm just clarifying.
I'll tell you that I'm not going to make that decision. You will make that decision at the appropriate time.
So, continuing on, what I'm hearing from you is that should someone emerge saying, "I want it," you know, "I want it for my backyard," or "I want it for target practice," you know, you know, you'll bring those back to us, and then we'll have to decide if that's someone we want to sell it to, and I guess we can consider what the purposes is that they want it. And then, would it be up to them to pay to incur the expense of coming and getting it?
That would be up to us, too. What the city manager is saying is typically surplus property, the decision's made by the staff. But because of the nature of this, he's going to bring it back to us. So, if someone comes and says, "I want to give a dollar, but I'll pay to move it," then we would have to make, he'd bring that to us, and we'd make a decision. And anyone can solicit that.
Okay, I've got a couple more.
Just one second.
Sure, take your time.
And we do have one more citizen that wants to speak. I think the box was inadvertently checked wrong. So, I'm going to allow that before we vote, but y'all can move forward with your comments. I just want to acknowledge that.
Okay. And again, I'm just trying to think down the road here, Mr. Hayes. So, you're going to bring it back if somebody indicates an interest. Would we have the legal ability, this is a Mr. Cooper question, would we have the legal ability to pay for the cost of trucking it out of here and reassembling it for somebody? Is that, if the council blesses that, is that something we can do?
I've not thought about this past council's action on this item today. I would think that would be something that the council would want to talk about. But I don't think that would be something that the manager would recommend. I wouldn't recommend it legally, but you would draft whatever procedure it is in conveying that property to whoever you convey it to. I would sell it, and they'd take it off however they choose to take it off.
And I understand you might not have thought about it past what is on here today, but because it has a bearing on how I may vote, I would like to know if legally we have the ability to convey what I would believe would be a gift. I guess you could say, well, if there's a public purpose for it, you know, if, do we have the legal authority to make a decision to pay for the cost of someone having to take it away from here and reassemble it for them? Can, can that even legally be done?
I would think, once you consummate your conveyance, that you no longer have any responsibility to it at all.
As a term of that conveyance, can we do that?
I'm sorry?
As a term of the conveyance, as part of the consideration.
If you include that as part of the sales price, yes.
So, you, you, we could do what, whatever we wanted to do. You could sell it for a dollar.
Right.
I mean, and you could not pay or pay, but the council would have to vote on that. And I tend to agree with the manager and with the city attorney. I wouldn't be willing to pay to move it and set it back up. But that's just me. So, I think before you put those things out there, that my opinion is, is that before you put those things out there that could happen, we don't know, because the council would have to vote on it.
Well, I understand, but I just-
Someone come forward and say, "I want to buy it, and I want you to pay to move it." And then council would have to vote on that.
Right. And I, I'm just trying to cover the basis here, because, you know, suppose there is a vote today to take it down, and it's put in a warehouse, and someone emerges and says, "Well, I'll buy it. I'll give you a dollar for it, but I don't have the money to come get it and put it back together, so I'd need y'all to do that for me."
Then the council would need to vote on that.
And the council, and that covered my question, I think. Legally, we can do it, but it sounds like it wouldn't be recommended by the city manager, the city attorney, and yourself. Okay?
Yes, Councilman Pate?
Okay, I'd like to go back to the motion that Odwin made, and that is to store it. And then, I, I think it would be appropriate to entertain any additional motion that Councilmember Neal may have, since we're not amending his motion.
Understand, but do you have any discussion?
That's my discuss, that's the point I'm making. If, if I support storing it, we vote to store it. That's the point I'm making. We vote to store it. Then it would open it up for any additional motions on what to do with it after it's been stored, correct?
That's right.
All right, then I'd move that we vote.
We, wait, we already have a motion and a second on the floor. I had asked for a vote, but you asked for discussion. That's why you made the second. So, let's make sure there's no other discussion before we move on to a vote, okay?
I have another question, Mayor.
Thank you. Go ahead, please.
So, thank you, Mayor. So, you're saying after this vote, we can make another motion and vote again?
To what we're going to do with it, but I don't even see how that would make sense, because we don't know what anybody's going to want. Or I think that's for another time, my opinion. But if that's what the council member wants to put forward, then I guess he can do that.
Well, when we vote, excuse me, just a second.
There is a motion and a second on the floor, and we're going to vote on that motion as it was read.
To store it.
Basically. Yes, sir. You made the motion.
There is a motion on the floor.
Yes.
And motion is to remove the statue, place it in storage until there's another decision as to what shall be done.
That's my point.
That was a motion, that was, that was the second. We were now open to other discussions.
Mm-hmm.
You have something else, Mr. Attorney?
You have one action item before you today.
Right. We can't-
To remove and store.
I understand that. Now is the time for discussion on the motion and second that's on the floor.
Exactly.
Mayor.
So, basically, though, let me just, please, okay, so, we cannot vote on this motion and then talk about what we're going to do with it. It's not an action item. We could talk about it, I guess, but we can't make any decision. So, I think we move forward with, I mean, we've, we've talked about it. We've made other suggestions. The motion is standing as it was made. And as soon as you make your comment, I'm going to ask for a vote, okay, everyone?
I got another comment, too.
Okay. Well, as a formality, and I'm certain I already know the answer to this, but I will ask Councilmember Samuel if he would accept as an amendment to his motion to incorporate the language that I have suggested on the base of the memorial and leave it as is.
Councilman, you're not going to amend your motion, as you said earlier, or are you-
I thought this was a discussion from, for everyone.
He was asking you a question.
I'm not going to even entertain that question.
Okay.
So, we can move on with the discussion.
The motion, motion is as it stands. Next.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I was told that the reason that the wording on this ordinance was so, so, just one line, was because it was a rush deal Friday. So, this whole thing is just becoming a scam whenever, the intentions all along were to do it. I'm simply asking to put on the ordinance. I don't understand why you can't change, or sorry, I don't understand why you can't add one sentence to a resolution to clearly state that we're going to have it professionally taken down and try to donate it, or sell it, or give it to a nonprofit, or do something different with it, rather than sitting in the back of a warehouse and just ruin it.
We can do something with it.
No, I'm being told we can't.
Well, no, not today.
Any, any ordinance or resolution that's brought to the council on any Tuesday is merely a recommendation for language. And it's up to the council, however you decide to make your motion, second your motion, and take your vote. We will go back and amend the resolution, amend the order based upon the, the motion and second and vote that's taken.
We do that all the time.
As I stand here, the motion has been made as to the resolution that's before you. It's been seconded. He's not been willing to amend it.
So, we need to vote on this motion.
On that motion.
This is a question for the city attorney. In order to get my proposal before the city council, is it necessary that Councilmember Samuel agree to amend it, or can other council members say, "You know, I like that language, and I would agree to that," and change, as you just said, change the language in the resolution as to reflect the action of council?
My, my understanding of procedural processes, and you've not adopted Robert's Rules of Order, the maker of the motion would have to accept any amendment to his motion and the second.
Okay, so, there's no way that my language can be considered, as long as this motion is on the floor. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, go, what do you-
Before you go, this is to you. If we vote on this motion by Odwin, and it fails, and Councilmember Neal comes up with, "We're going to store it and see what we can do about selling it," would that, is that appropriate?
Yes.
If a motion fails, you can put anything else back on the floor.
Okay.
Mayor, I'm sorry. It was my understanding, though, what you just said, that we can vote on this, and we can vote on it in keeping with the spirit of what's been spoken. Odwin has his motion to remove the statue and put in storage. Taylor is asking that we just maintain it, we protect it until such time we're able to sell and/or donate it. We can't vote on that within that spirit of what was just said?
Not unless he amends his motion, because that's not in there. In the future, if we have that availability, then it could come back to us, and we could vote on it.
But if the motion on the floor fails, then I can make a motion on what I just proposed today.
That's correct. That's why I rushed into putting some on the agenda.
The, the motion, as I understand it, and the resolution as it's before you, does not speak to how the statute is to be cared for. And I don't think it's anybody's understanding that it's going to be destroyed. And I don't think it's anybody's understanding that it's going to be destroyed.
No.
It is going to be properly cared for, stored appropriately, until the council decides what you want to do with it.
Well, then can Taylor, excuse me, Councilman Neal, come back next Tuesday with an agenda item just stating that we want to make sure that we care for the statue until such time we're able to sell or and/or donate to a museum?
Yes.
Can he do it today?
No, it's not an action item today unless it fails.
Exactly.
And if it fails, can he do it today?
If it fails, you can consider a different motion.
You can do any motion you want if it fails. Or it can come back next week if another council member seconds it, just like happened today.
Two things, Mayor. One, if it passes today, he could still come back next week and do the same thing.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay.
I think it's.
All right, if everybody, and we do have a surplus policy that we will follow, if it doesn't, okay? All right, there is a motion.
Mayor, you were going to let someone speak before the motion?
Oh, I'm so sorry, yes. I'm just trying to get to a vote.
I know, I just don't want you to forget about him.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay, his name is David Morgan, 3108 Yeoman's Needle in Texas.
I apologize for being so late and bringing this back up, but this issue.
As I understand it, you did, you just didn't have the right thing checked.
I checked the wrong box, yes.
Okay, all right, otherwise you wouldn't be able to come late and speak.
Basically, removing this statue is like putting a Band-Aid on an amputated limb. If we take this statue down, we've got to remove the Dick Dowling statue, we've got to remove the Maribou and change the name of the college, Lamar. He was one of the biggest racists in Texas, and it's a proven fact in the W.T. Block history of Texas. I've got it on my Facebook page. We need to bulldoze the Civil War battlement in Sabatin Pass. We need, if we're going to eradicate history, we need to eradicate everything and start over. If it has to do with, well, Thomas Jefferson owned slaves, George Washington owned slaves, Benjamin Franklin owned slaves, well, we're going to keep those statues, we've got to take this one down. Like I said, it's like putting a Band-Aid on an amputated limb. I would be willing to purchase this thing for a dollar and 37 scrap bronze price. I do have access to professional construction workers who build refineries for a living and could take this thing down safely with the use of their equipment. I think the statue can be repurposed, if not melted down and made into a different design, which I also have an idea for, which the art people down here on the other Pearl Street have a whole studio of artists that can come up with an idea. But just to remove one statue's not going to fix the problem in Beaumont. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor of.
Madam, ma'am.
Sure.
I asked to speak, but was cut off.
Oh, okay, go ahead, please.
My motion was simply to remove a statue that has been shown to be offensive to many That was to be done as we have the ability to move many things. We've moved things in the city before, we've moved statues even over to the art museum. Now, I don't know what type of procedure somebody's talking about proposing to ensure that it's not damaged. Our city employees are employees that have the ability to move the statue, and should there be problems with that, then whomever is in charge of moving it, they would have to address that. Isn't that right, Mr. Manager?
Well, if we hire an outside contractor to help us, I think they'll provide insurance coverage.
So that should not be a problem. And the motion was to put it in storage until another site was found. Now, as Councilmember Getz mentioned, three years ago, he wanted to come up with an alternate proposal or negotiate something. At that time, he wanted to, he proposed to me to put this over with the Temple of the Brave, those individuals who fought in the American Revolution, fighting against the Those were soldiers of honor that fought for this country. That is totally different from soldiers of reason to fight against this country. To redirect or restructure that statue, in my opinion, and in the opinion of many, that wouldn't change what the statue is. As somebody said, "You can put lipstick on a pig, but it's still a pig." So your proposal, as I told you then, was not acceptable.
That's not acceptable.
It's not acceptable then, it's not acceptable now. What that statue says is separation today, segregation tomorrow, and segregation forever. That's a revelry for those who believe that principle is fair and just. The candidate running for president, Strong Thurmond, brought back that Confederate spirit. And that's when we began to see the ground swell of the statues that were being erected for honoring Confederate soldiers. You say heritage, some say hate, you say culture, some say slavery. You can put whatever you want on that statue, it's not going to change the statue. What I see are black men hanging in trees, and that was okay. And you sit here and try and justify.
Mayor, I'm going to call a point of order because I have not tried to justify.
I am speaking, Mr. Getz.
And I've called a point of order.
I gave you the opportunity to say what you had to say.
Point of order. Point of order. I'm not going to sit here and let him try to say I'm justifying that statue.
I'm going to go for a recess, 10 minutes. We're going to recess. Go separate ways, please. Go separate ways, cool off. Separate ways, please.
And people die. 400 years later, we're just asking that we all be treated the same as human beings. When we can do that, some folks will have more faith, some folks will have their hope renewed that one day we shall overcome. When they tore down the wall in Berlin, they all came together on both sides, singing that old civil rights anthem, "We Shall Overcome." What must we do? We simply ask to be treated just like you.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Because I believe the proposal that I put forth makes more sense, I vote no.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other no's? The motion carries with one no. Next item, please.